And we'll move. Okay, thank you. We'll move to the approval of the minutes of May 29th, June 25th, and July 16th. The manager reminds me that Mr. McCoy was not here on June 25th. Do we have a motion on, well, we'll take them up together anyways. Do we have a motion to approve those minutes?
Move to approve the minutes for the dates as just read by the chairman.
Seconded.
Made and seconded. Anything further? All in favor?
I've been feeling abstained from the June 25th meeting.
All set on that, Beth? Thank you. Our 7:00 appointment is with the Board of Selectmen discussion regarding development of town-owned land at Nine Cross Street, the former Yentile Farm property. And the board is in receipt of a memorandum that I'd like to quickly read through for the benefit of either folks in the audience or others who might be watching on television. It's addressed to the Board of Selectmen from myself dated August 10th, and the purpose of this memorandum is to outline a proposed process to begin the development of a recreational area at the town's newly acquired property located at Nine Cross Street, commonly referred to as the former Yentile Farm. As you know, the attendees at the annual town meeting on May 5th, 2012 appropriated funds for the acquisition of the property and authorized the Board of Selectmen to purchase the property from Century Bank and Trust Company. The property was officially acquired by the town on June 6th, 2012, and the Department of Public Works then took appropriate measures to secure the property. The Board of Selectmen has long identified as a community priority the need to expand upon the town's inventory of athletic fields and recreational sites. Over the past several years, the town has reconstructed or refurbished many of its fields, playgrounds, and outdoor recreational courts. In addition, among other improvements, the town has built new playgrounds, established new field space, constructed a skate park, and developed a handicapped fishing pier. The acquisition of the Yentile Farm property, however, provides the town with a unique opportunity to build a more comprehensive play area to serve Wilmington families. The next step in this process is to establish a committee to work towards the development of the land. The committee would be responsible for engaging the general public, including recreation and athletic organizations, to help define the scope of the project. The committee will be asked to develop a number of alternative plans for the use of the property, including the preparation of cost estimates associated with each option. In addition, the committee will be asked to assess timelines for the completion of any project to be undertaken and to identify funding sources, including grants, fundraising, and gifts. I'm recommending that the board constitute a committee by appointing citizens involved in recreation and community organizations, as well as those town officials who would normally be involved in the development, oversight, and/or operation of this type of facility. To that end, I propose the following composition of the committee. One member to be appointed by each of the respective selectmen. One member to be appointed by the town manager. The town manager himself or his designee. The DPW superintendent or his designee. The recreation director or her designee. The planning and conservation director or her designee. The health director or her designee. And one member of the Board of Selectmen is designated by the chairman. I'd ask that these appointments be made at the board's next meeting on September 10, 2012, and that immediately thereafter, the town manager takes steps to facilitate the initial meeting of the committee. So, in short, what I'm proposing to the board, unless I hear any objections, is to create this committee at our next regularly scheduled meeting. And I hope, as you've gleaned from the memorandum, we're hoping to give each member of the board an opportunity to be included in creating that committee by making an individual appointment to that committee. And certainly, folks should feel free to express an interest. Members would be encouraged to reach out to prospective members that you think would be effective advocates and representatives of the town. And let's see where that committee takes us. Questions or comments about what we have in mind?
Question, if I may. Is your proposal here that each of us appoint a member, or are we nominating a member that will ultimately be voted on and approved by our colleagues?
The former. And frankly, my thinking is that oftentimes, when there's an ad hoc committee of any kind that's created, oftentimes nominations are put forward and then the board takes a vote. Historically, I think this board has always tried to make sure that everybody has a voice, but this, I think, just gets right to it and gives every member, you know, an opportunity to make an appointment.
Additionally, thank you. Additionally, what mechanism do you foresee in identifying the member from this board who would be on this committee?
Frankly, I've already talked to Ms. O'Connell to see if she would be interested in that, and she's indicated that she is. So, I'm inclined, especially with her history and interest in youth athletics and her participation in that, I've already had that conversation.
So, again, this would be an appointment effectively by you as the chairman of one of us as members?
Right.
Okay, that's good. And is there a preferred method of communication that you can think of, or, I don't know if it's sort of, you want to leave it open, or if there are constituents, residents, who are interested in participating and would want we, the members, to consider them as our appointee, how would you recommend they gain contact or let that be known? Other than, I guess, you know, make, call us or whatever, but can they reach out to the town manager's office and?
I would say that makes sense. First of all, if any resident or individual who's associated with the town in one respect or another wants to serve, a call to any individual member, an email, whatnot, would be appropriate. If there's anybody out there who is, for whatever reason, is uncomfortable with that, there's no reason why they can't just pick up the phone or shoot an email over to the manager's office. And I would ask that the manager provide us with names as they come in of folks who are interested.
Very well. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions, comments from the audience on that? Very well. Our 7:20 appointment, which I, even though we're a little bit ahead of schedule, I think is fine to proceed with that report in that it's not a hearing of any kind. Our 7:20 appointment, as reflected on the agenda, is a report on the DEP appeal process relative to the high school project. I just want to quickly review what the process has been to this point, where we are at that point in the process, and what the town and the Board of Selectmen should expect going forward over the course of the next few months. As the board is well aware, and as many residents are aware, the town of Wilmington in developing its plans for the new high school as part of the regulatory process filed what's called a notice of intent with the Wilmington Conservation Commission. That notice of intent is essentially a request to the Conservation Commission to approve the project with whatever conditions are appropriate in light of the State Wetlands Protection Act and other applicable laws and regulations. The Wilmington Conservation Commission had issued its order of conditions in the spring, and as the board certainly recalls, and residents will recall, in May, there was a challenge to that order of conditions by way of an appeal to DEP. And that appeals process is clearly spelled out in state regulations and a portion of the Code of Massachusetts regulations. As part of that process, a representative of DEP was assigned to the case. That representative conducted a site visit, reviewed documentation, and requested documentation from the town and interested parties, and issued what's called a superseding order of conditions. That superseding order of conditions trumps, if you will, the decision of the Conservation Commission. In this particular case, that didn't cause any problems from the town of Wilmington's standpoint in that the project that had been proposed continued to be the project that would be permitted under the DEP superseding order of conditions. Subsequent to that, in late July, specifically on July 25th and July 27th, the decision of DEP now is being challenged by two different appeals, one by an abutter and one by a so-called 10 resident appeal. Currently, those appeals have been docketed, and there's actually a conference scheduled tomorrow morning at the offices of DEP. It is referred to as a pre-screening conference, and the purpose of that conference is essentially threefold. First of all, it allows the hearings officer to review with the parties of interest the potential for any settlement that might avail itself and that would be mutually acceptable to the parties. It also enables the hearings officer, with the input of the parties to the action, the ability to identify the issues that will be adjudicated through the hearings process, both in terms of factual issues and legal issues. And thirdly, it establishes a schedule for the remainder of the hearings process to It's expected that within about a week, the hearings officer assigned to this case will generate what's called a conference report, and that report will memorialize, really, what was accomplished at the conference, namely, what the issues are that will be adjudicated through the hearings process, both in terms of disputed facts or disagreements as to the application of certain laws and regulations. Tentatively, at this point, it's anticipated that the hearing would actually occur on October 25th. I say that it's anticipated because that date has been scheduled, but as any judicial or quasi-judicial proceeding goes, those dates aren't necessarily written in stone. So, I think that's a reasonable expectation that we have, that the hearing will occur in late October, specifically October 25th. But obviously, we need to deal with the process and any changes that might come up. Other than providing that kind of chronological review of the case and reporting to the general public and to the board on the status, I think it's important for the general public to know that the Board of Selectmen is unanimous in its position on these appeals. Literally, to a person, every member of this board had contacted me and expressed a willingness to do whatever needed to be done in terms of meetings or extra work or whatever it took, literally within two to three days after the most recent appeal was filed. So, with an issue that is garnering so much interest in the general public, I just feel compelled to let the public know that the board is unanimous in our position on this. We certainly believe that the appeals are without merit and that ultimately, the town will prevail in those appeals, and that we're doing all that we can with the able assistance of professional and technical consultants and legal counsel, and that we'll continue to do that. Certainly would be happy, I think, between Mr. Kyra and myself, who've been receiving literally, I think it's daily reports, I mean, it's been, certainly been an issue that's, that has deservedly demanded time from administrative folks and from our technical advisors on a daily basis. We can do the best to answer those questions, of course, in a quasi-legal proceeding, as we have before DEP. Some of those questions, if they, if the answers to them don't make sense to discuss publicly, then we can just indicate as much and discuss it in executive session if need be. The one question I would anticipate members of the board having, based on the level of interest that everybody has demonstrated on this, is whether or not it's necessary to be there tomorrow. And from my perspective, it's not necessary for the board to be there tomorrow, as interested as we all are in this. Really, this conference tomorrow is really the opportunity for the hearings officer to get a handle on the nature of everybody's claims and where they think the case is going. I would, I would say it's quite similar to if, you know, if you're interested in watching a baseball game, tomorrow, you're not going to miss any innings. You may be missing the umpire talking to the managers about the ground rules, and that's about it. So, from my perspective, there will be plenty of opportunity for the board and for the general public to be involved and to move this initiative forward. But tomorrow would not take time from work, personal time, or anything else to be at this. I just don't expect any earth-shattering developments tomorrow.
May I ask who is scheduled to attend on the town's behalf?
A long roster of folks that I would characterize as town manager and superintendent, legal counsel, and professional and technical advisors from project managers, architectural team, LSPs, and the like. I plan on attending really for the purpose of being able to report back to the board from a substantive standpoint. It's not necessary to be there, but I certainly feel as though I'm obliged to report back to the board as quickly as I can.
So, with that, the communication has been great. How do you plan on updating us? Would you sign out a memo because we're not due to meet? Or call us, or how do you want to?
Yeah, put it this way, I would certainly say if there are any decisions that are made by the hearings officer tomorrow, we'd communicate by our typical fashion, email and hard copy package at the end of the week. Barring that, which frankly, I don't expect, barring that, we'll be certain to get the conference report out to the board immediately upon receipt, which would likely be, I assume at that point, giving that to the high school building committee as well, that conference report. And that would be a public record that would be accessible to the public as well, as soon as that's finalized by the hearings officer and published. So, in this, in this, this time, you know, there is like an immediate turnaround of information, which, for the most part, is a positive, but it's, sometimes it's a challenge to keep the information, you know, moving along in a way that people understand it and get the context when it's immediately available electronically.
Appreciate that. Just obviously, a lot of people are talking about it.
Yeah, I know.
And, you know, getting a lot of interest. You know, people contacting, you know, us as members to get an update, so.
Right.
I'd just like to make a comment, Mr. Chairman. I agree with what Judy said. A lot of us that are out there, we hear a lot of positive things from the residents. And I just want to say, I think a couple of months ago, that this board was very gentleman-like, ladylike to obviously talk to the opposing side to see if we could extend an olive branch to try to mediate this. I don't care what we say or what we do, this is going to be a 12-round fight, and I believe that the town of Wilmington will win the decision. It's going to be time and money, and that's what it's going to come down to. It's really sad, sad situation that it's gone. It's becoming more personal than professional. It's really a sad situation. I think the initial numbers, Mike, the town manager, correct me, I think we're talking probably about $3 million. This could cost us, I think the town is going to prevail, but it's going to cost the taxpayers probably another $3 million because the cost of goods are going to go up, the cost of materials, the cost of, everything is going to go up in the next couple of months. And I take a look at the $3 million. $3 million to the town of Wilmington, that would probably pay for a new town manager for about 25 years. $3 million would probably buy a beautiful senior center for our seniors. And $3 million would probably help out with town employees, public safety, and teachers. And I'll tell you something, as a member of the Board of Selectmen, been on the board for a while, we get paid $250 a year. That would probably pay for the Board of Selectmen's fee 2,400 years that that would actually pay for our pay. You know, so it gives you an idea on where this thing is going. I just think it's sad and pathetic, and once again, I think that we're going to be like Muhammad Ali, a little rope-a-dope, but we're going to win the decision. And it's just a really sad situation. And I'll say one more thing to the town manager. I see him smiling, and I said, I'll bring it up someday. Couple of years ago, when we had the feasibility study to vote on, he did come up, he said, you know, you're perhaps one of the more conservative guys on the board, it would be nice to see you support, obviously, the feasibility study. Not only did I support it, I got up and smoked in favor of it, you know? And I thought it was something worthwhile. I still believe it's something worthwhile pursuing, and I definitely believe at the end of the day that we're going to win this thing. And it's really sad that it's gotten this far, you know? Time and money, folks, owning a business, time and money, that's all it's going to be.
Anything else?
Yeah, briefly, if I may. I had read, or I had seen an insinuation that had been made by someone who, I don't remember who it was, and it really doesn't matter, but the suggestion was made that how could the town manager and the Board of Selectmen not have seen this coming? How come we weren't prepared for it? And I thought, geez, that's unfortunate, because clearly, we certainly did see it coming, we certainly were prepared for it, but that communication probably hadn't made it out, and maybe we weren't as diligent in making the population aware of all that we were doing at the municipal level to prepare for and be aware of the potential. At the end of the day, the Code of Massachusetts regulations lays out the appeals process, and we are at the mercy of that process. So, I guess, I just want all residents to understand that this didn't take us by surprise, per se. We were not in any way ill-prepared for what we're facing today. We hoped, in the best case, that we wouldn't have to face these issues. We hoped that the good judgment and the tremendous planning and the great investments that have been made thus far in getting us approved by DEP would be sufficient to continue the process moving forward, even as we were aware that the appeals process gave the possibility to, to other people to appeal it. So, I guess I was just challenged at that time by the insinuation that somehow your local government wasn't prepared or wasn't ready. On the contrary, we were very ready, very prepared, and we are just dealing with the appeals process that's, that's put in front of us. So, I wanted to put that on the table, that's all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anything else? Communications?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you have a copy of a letter that was sent from Margaret J. Hurley, the Assistant Attorney General to Town Clerk Sharon George, approving the amendment to Wilmington bylaws under Warren Article 20 of the 2012 Annual Town Meeting, which amends the town's general bylaw curfew in public parks, playgrounds, and fields. You will recall that this bylaw itself was adopted in 2011, but one piece of it was struck, and therefore, we amended that particular, excuse me, I'm sorry, we amended that particular bylaw at the last town meeting as it had to do with enforcement and penalties, and the amendments authorize the use of a non-criminal disposition pursuant to any violations of the curfew bylaw, which is essentially what we wanted to have happen, in that, so that we weren't talking about criminal actions, but the ability to offer a fine. So, that was, that was approved by the Attorney General's office, and that gets posted and goes through, I believe, a 90-day process before it actually becomes a law. Bringing to your attention a notification that the town of Wilmington and every community received from Secretary of the Commonwealth, William Galvin, regarding a change in the voter registration deadline for the September 6th, 2012 state primary. Typically, the deadline is on the, on the date certain at 8:00 p.m. They have changed that to make it 5:00 p.m. So, we want to bring this to everyone's attention. I suspect it's not going to affect a lot of people, but, you know, like other communities, we had published that the last day and time to register for the September 6th, 2012 primary was Friday, August 17th at 8:00 p.m. The secretary, under his authority, has changed that, in this case, to make it 5:00 p.m. We have publicized that on our website, it's on the general website of the town, as well as the town clerk's site, and we just want to give people notice of that. We've, we've posted it. The date is still August 17th, if you are not registered and want to register to vote in the state primary, which we will remind people is on a Thursday this year, it's on September 6th, the Thursday. The legislature had prior to this point changed the normal date, which would have been on a Tuesday in September. They've made it Thursday, September 6th. So, it's going to happen a little earlier, and your registration deadline is changed from 8:00 to 5:00 p.m. on August 17th. The board has received a correspondence from the Massachusetts Department of Transportation's Budget Director, Paul J., relative to the town's fiscal year 13, Chapter 90 apportionment, and those funds will now be coming towards, to the town based upon the governor signing the bill. The state apportionment is $200 million, and the town's apportionment of that is around Wanted to bring the board up to date with regard to Senate Bill 2289, which, as you know, is the legislation to dissolve the Wilmington Redevelopment Authority. Again, this comes from an action taken at the last town meeting, and we have been advised by legal counsel to the office of the Senate Minority Leader Bruce Tar that on Thursday, August 9th, the Massachusetts State Senate engrossed Senate 2289, the act relative to the redevelopment authority in the town of Wilmington. The legislation will now proceed to the House of Representatives for action on the bill, and we'll continue to keep you apprised of the progress of this particular legislation. The board has also been notified by the Massachusetts Municipal Association that the Joint House Senate Conference Committee, of the Joint House Senate Conference Committee's decision to preserve the local taxing authority in the legislation relative to solar and renewable energy facilities. You will recall that the communities at large, the MMA and the Board of Selectmen in this case, supported the solar and renewable energy facility, except for that portion of the legislation that eliminated our local taxing authority. That has been, in fact, now eliminated from the bill, and so MMA is advising us of that. It is a significant victory, as they indicate, for the cities and towns by preserving the town's ability to collect property taxes on these facilities. That went forward from the conference committee and is expected to be adopted. The board has the typical communication that we get annually from the Mass, from the Metropolitan Area Planning Council and the MBTA Advisory Board regarding municipal elections to the Boston Region Metropolitan Planning Organizations. They note through providing a copy of the election procedures for the municipal seats that the MPO seat currently held by the town of Bedford and the MPO seat currently held by the city of Braintree are up for election this year. Any municipality from either the Boston Region Metropolitan Planning Organization here in the North Shore or other South Shore regions can seek a nomination to run for one of these seats. It is only the chief elected official, in this case Chairman Newhouse, who has the voting authority, and as nominees come forward, we will provide that information. It's a rather lengthy process. There is an overview of the responsibilities, the board members have all seen it before, and we'll make sure that the chairman receives all of the information. Obviously, if there's a member here that's interested in, in running for office, they can go forward with that process. I wanted to bring to the board's attention correspondence that we, that the police chief received from Sheila Burgess, who's the Director of the Highway Safety Division and the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, thanking Chief Begonis for their application to this year's Massachusetts Law Enforcement Challenge. You recall that he was with us a year ago at this time to discuss their success. In this case, they advise us that based on the judges' scores, the town of Wilmington Police Department has received and will receive in a formal ceremony on August 24th an award of excellence in the gold category for municipal departments. They've also enclosed the list of winners in order of the finish, and when the board looks at that, they will note that the town of Wilmington was the looks at that, they will note that the Town of Wilmington was the first-place recipient in the gold category of municipal department winners. So, among those communities that were selected in that category, Wilmington finished at the top, and I've extended to them, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, a letter of congratulations in talking with the chairman of the board about this. The chairman asked that I extend an invitation to the chief and anybody on his staff who were involved in this accomplishment on a leadership level to attend a future meeting of the board, in order that the police chief can be congratulated personally by the board members, as well as an opportunity for us to hear about this particular project. So, I've extended that invitation, and we can work out a date that's mutually convenient for all, Mr. Chairman.
That's great news.
Wanted to advise the board, and particularly the public, that there will be some construction going on, beginning tomorrow, on Chestnut Street. Whenever there is a major roadway in town, we try to give notice, just as we talked about the construction that's been going on in Grove. You are advised that, beginning tomorrow, August 14, the town's roadway management contractor will, in fact, be grinding and paving Chestnut Street from Burlington Avenue to Butters Row, perhaps extended just a little bit beyond Butters Row. That portion of the roadway only will be closed during construction, and it'll be closed, actually, during construction, from the Burlington Avenue end of Chestnut Street down to the Butters Row end of Chestnut Street. It will open at the end of the, at the end of the day. Traffic, in this case, will be rerouted via both Marion Street and Butters Row. So, if you are coming from Burlington Avenue, you'll be rerouted to Marion Street if you are going to the lower end of Chestnut Street, and if you're coming up Chestnut Street and not able to go on that portion of Chestnut that is going to be paved, you'll be rerouted out to Butters Row. Paper notification has already been provided to area residences along the paving route, and to those residents along the side streets off of the actual construction route. The DPW sent out an Everbridge notification, which is our reverse 911 notification, to residents of Chestnut Street, Marion Street, Butters Row, and to all the residents who live off of streets that run off of those particular roadways. So, that entire area has been notified. In addition, notification of and information on the roadway reconstruction project is both on the town's general website, as well as the DPW website. We're using the police department's electronic signboard, and depending upon weather conditions, the project is expected to conclude by Friday, August 17. So, hopefully, if all goes well, this will be over by the end of the week. If you have any questions about that and are not able to access the website, you can contact the Department of Public Works, and they'll advise you as to what is happening. The Board of Selectmen received a letter from Sheriff of Middlesex County, Peter Katusian, and he writes that "Every summer, the Middlesex Sheriff's Office is proud to invite hundreds of children throughout Middlesex County to participate in a youth public safety academy. Since the inception, over 30 Middlesex County communities have participated, and more than 15,000 cadets have graduated." The Public Safety Academy teaches participants about the value of public safety and team-building skills, and he is inviting the members of the Board of Selectmen and other town officials to, from Chelmsford, Lowell, Tewksbury, and, of course, Wilmington, to join with him on Friday, August 17, at the graduation ceremonies. I know that, I've already responded, and I know that I saw that Selectmen Shampoo has responded. If anybody is interested in attending, or if you're unable to attend, if you would let them know, they would request that you do so. The information is available on the correspondence. We have a letter from Jane Lyman, the Senior Manager of Government and Regulatory Affairs from Comcast Xfinity, regarding program changes. There are a number of program changes that residents are being advised of, those residents that I speak of, those who have, who are subscribers to Comcast Cable, and essentially, it is an indication of new channels that have been added to the channel lineup in the Town of Wilmington. They provide that information about numerous channels, HD and otherwise, including Discovery Channels, and National Geographic, and sports programming, and the like, and that notification is being sent to all of the subscribers of Xfinity. The board is being asked to consider approving the Preservation Restriction Agreement between the Society for the Preservation of New England Antiquities, which you know of as Historic New England, and Warren Stevenson and Kim Gorl Stevenson for property known as the Bautel Hathon House, located at 280 Woburn Street, also known to the community as the Richardson Estates. You will recall that the board heard from Jess Phelps, and Carolyn Harris, and Terry McDermott at their last meeting with regard to the Preservation Restriction Agreement, and the board had decided that, after listening to them, they would entertain the document that has been approved by town council at this particular meeting. And so, essentially, what you have here is the preservation agreement that imposes the restrictions on 280 Woburn Street, consistent with the vote several years ago of the town meeting. Once the board approves the PRA, assuming that they do, the restrictions in the PRA can be, come permanent in duration pursuant to mass general law. As you're aware, the board already holds a Preservation Restriction on 280 Woburn Street, and that Reservation Restriction will become a part of this sort of omnibus restriction that is being recommended for approval of the board. The individuals that I named have just purchased the house, and they would have to come to both the town and to Historic New England to take any maintenance or renovation actions on the house in the future. So, I would request, unless the board has any concerns, that a motion be offered to approve the Preservation Restriction.
Questions, comments, or a motion?
I'll move to approve the Preservation Restriction Agreement between the Town of Wilmington and the property located at, what was the address again?
280 Woburn Street.
280 Woburn Street.
With the two individuals involved, right?
So noted.
Second. Made in second, and anything further? All in favor?
We need a one.
Unanimous?
Signature by your name, please. Thank you.
Certain pen color?
No, doesn't matter. Board is being asked to consider acceptance of a grant of easement for drainage purposes from Richard Steinmetz and Paul Steinmetz for property located at 3 Lawrence Street, further described in Assessors Map 66, Parcel 61A. I provided you with a copy of a memorandum that the Engineering Director, Anthony Pronsky, sent to me about this particular easement. The Drainage and Sidewalk Improvement Project is part of the town's ongoing program to provide pedestrian safety and to assist in alleviating stormwater flooding conditions in Wilmington. During the construction of Phase 1 of the Lawrence Street project, it became apparent that the existing drainage culvert on private property at Number 3 Lawrence Street was failing, and to their credit, the property owners were willing to work with the town by granting a drainage easement on their private property in order for us to replace the aging drainage system. The Engineering Director describes this as "an important drainage improvement, which, as proposed, will assist in mitigating the current stormwater runoff issues that occur at this particular location." And so, they're asking that the board approve the grant of easement for drainage purposes that will allow the town to continue to maintain and repair the drainage system in the future. That, obviously, is a requirement for us to do so.
Questions, comments, or a motion?
Motion to accept the grant of easement for drainage purposes, as outlined by the town manager.
May I have a second?
Second.
Made in second, and anything further? All in favor? Unanimous?
Two signatures are required at the green tab. Thank you. Board is also being asked to consider acceptance of a grant of easement for drainage purposes from Dai-Feng Hao and Lei Kao for property located at 8 Lexington Street. This is described also on Assessors Map 69, Parcel 82. And in this case, we are doing a drainage improvement project, one of our most difficult streets, by way of, lack of appropriate drainage, as you know, is Cunningham Street, and we are endeavoring to take care of those problems. This, again, is a part of the town's ongoing program to assist in alleviating stormwater flooding conditions throughout the community. It's an important roadway drainage improvement project, which will assist in mitigating the current stormwater runoff and roadway ponding that, you know, occurs at this particular location. These roadway improvements will be constructed by the Town of Wilmington. There are no betterment costs charged to the Butters. In exchange for the drainage outlet easement on private property, DPW will continue to maintain and repair the drainage system in the future. Again, we appreciate the cooperation of the residents in this regard, and we would request that the board consider the acceptance of a grant of easement for drainage purposes in this instance at 8 Lexington Street.
Do we have a motion of that effect?
Motion to accept, as described by the town manager, please.
Second. Made in second, and anything further? All in favor? Unanimous?
Two signatures, thank you. The next item on the agenda is a request to change the name and ownership on a flammable license from Doms Mobile, doing business as Petro Group, to Wally Daya, doing business as Ivona LLC. I'm going to ask that the board, at this point, consider tabling that action right now, because there are some issues relative to taxes at this property that have come to my attention, and although there were favorable recommendations with regard to, you know, the actual change in terms of the flammable license itself, which the board approved a few meetings ago, there are some issues here that we need to look at with regard to taxes on the property. So, I would request that the board hold off at this point and postpone or table to a future meeting.
Why don't we ask for a motion to table until the next meeting, and then we'll see if it's resolved by then? Do we have a motion to table this until the next regularly-scheduled Selectmen's meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Made in second, and anything further? All in favor? Unanimous?
The board is being asked, instead of a request of Sharon George, our town clerk, to appoint additional election workers. She is recommending the appointments of Elizabeth Warrenson, Rosalie McConalogue, and Donna Giantonio.
Do we have a motion?
Move to approve the election workers as recommended?
Second.
Made in second, and all in favor? Unanimous?
That concludes the regular business before the board, Mr. Chairman.
Public comments. Yes, Mr. Bodnar?
Mr. Chairman, it's not only the, well, some of the, like, heavy charge with the board and town manager. Basically, it pertains to Chelmsford has hired the prisoners to paint their school. I believe we had the Shawshing School painted this summer. I don't know how far along the project is, or whatever, but I know, I think I brought up something at the town meeting to hire prisoners to do it, and the comeback was, well, the school, and we can't have prisoners because of the children. Proof of the pudding is there. I noticed we evidently have the tavern painted by prisoners. Of course, there's no one at the site. If we can give it some credence to any future work like that, it would save the town and taxpayers money, and, actually, Mr. Hao, give it some thought in the coming years. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
May I just comment, just very briefly?
Certainly.
Apparently, they painted locker rooms. We have used the prisoners on a number of occasions, and, in fact, as you mentioned, we just used them for the Hondan Tavern. We also used them for the West School. We've used them for the South School. We used them for the library. We've used the prisoners on a number of occasions, so we've been fortunate to continue to use them. I'm not going to make a value judgment on what Chelmsford is doing, but we were using painters, and the painting project was for the entirety of the Shawshing School. The school department has consistently indicated to us that they do not want prisoners painting in the schools, and so we'll continue to make use of them in other areas, and I think it'll be up, certainly, to the new manager and Board of Selectmen to make those determinations in the future, but that's the reasoning that we've used.
And, of course, town meeting appropriating the money for projects like that, which was fully discussed at town meeting. Anything else? Yes, Mr. McDonald?
Hey, Mr. Newhouse. I'd just like to address the community tonight, thank the board for this opportunity to speak. And I'd like to address the appeals.
Mr. McDonald, we aren't going to discuss the appeals that are in a judicial proceeding. The board had a report on that for the general public. Honestly, we're not interested in having that discussion.
The thing I want to bring up was, I agree with Mr. Bodnar, because tonight, Mr. McCoy stated that this project was going to cost $3 million. Mr. McCoy also talked about other numbers that, I think he said that $3 million could pay for a town manager for 20 years. I don't think the math adds up for that, but this is just an example of what Mr. Bodnar said of where the town could have saved money. The $3 million figure that people throw out.
Mr. McDonald, excuse me, excuse me. I've indicated once already, and I've indicated that it's out of order to use this time to discuss the high school project, the appeals, or the time or the cost associated with that. That was a conversation that the board had. It's over with, it's done with, and that's now, that's now the second time that we'll go out of order. That's two strikes. If I could ask you to please move on to a different subject.
I'm just asking you why, if it's inappropriate to talk about the appeal, why Mr. McCoy was allowed to talk about numbers, if that are false numbers.
Mr. McDonald, not that you, not that we have to make this explanation, but I'll do it anyways. I'll answer your question. The Board of Selectmen put time on its agenda for myself and the town manager to report back to the board as to the status of the appeals. It's also an opportunity for the board to address the general public. This is not a forum in which we are going to engage you or anybody else on the merits of the appeal. It's Mr. McCoy's province, as an elected official in this town, popularly elected by the residents of Wilmington, to make comment on a report that was publicized at a regularly-scheduled meeting. So, I'm not going to debate the point with you. It's out of order twice, sir, and it's out of order twice. Please move on to, no, 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 no. Please move on, please move on. Please move on to a different subject matter if you'd like to take advantage of public comments.
I just invite anybody from the town to come to the DEP meeting tomorrow.
Okay, Mr. McDonald, that's three times. Mr. McDonald, in accordance with the open meeting law, I've asked you please to refrain from making any comment. You don't have the floor any, any longer. And if you continue to interrupt, I'll just ask you to withdraw from the meeting. Thank you, sir. Anything else from the public? New Business Committee reports.
I'm good. Thank you.
Anything down here?
Yeah, not, I just wanted to, Mr. Kyra alluded to it and I had reached out to the sheriff's contacts earlier today and I'll be planning on attending the graduation for those cadets that, from Wilmington that went through the camp this week. The graduation is this Friday. So I hope, I'm looking forward to it. I've been to it before. My children have actually participated in it. I view it as a very, very positive camp. They really highlight a lot of very positive messages about personal and public safety. And I'm looking forward to being there and congratulating our young people that have attended that. So I hope some of you can join and if not, I will do my best to represent you. I also just wanted to raise to everyone's attention that, well, I guess I want to say, I hope everyone's having a great summer. Here we are in the middle of August, which blows my mind because we're actually, you know, in fact, my wife came home today and she had bought all the back-to-school supplies. So we're actively thinking about schools. So I just want to remind you, but before, the next time before we meet, school will have started again. And I imagine this broadcast will be on a few times over the course of the next few weeks. So just please be careful. I think we get used to the idea of not seeing kids in the morning on, walking to the bus stops and we get used to not seeing the buses on the road. But in just a short couple of weeks, all of that will change again. And I just want everyone to please be safe and watch out for and take care of our young people in the, in the community. And I guess lastly, I'll just simply say, I ask everyone in the community, especially those that are passionate about the, this high school project on both sides, I ask for patience and professionalism as we go through this process. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
What dates?
Yes, the farmers market, just want to remind you, continues through September 30th on Sundays from 10:30 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. opposite the Town Common. The High School Building Committee next meets on Thursday, August 16th here at the Town Hall in Room 9 at 6:30 p.m. The last day to register to vote in the state primary election, which will be held on September 6th, is August 17th until 5:00 p.m. in the Town Clerk's office. Want to just add one item. On August 23rd, which is a week from Thursday night, there'll be Rotary Night at the Movies. This was a program that started last year by the Wilmington Rotary Club. And it's a free event. Residents, families are invited to attend, to gather at Rotary Park where there will be outdoor, an outdoor showing of the movie How to Train Your Dragon, which is a family movie appropriate for all. I know that those that attended the movie night last night, we're not, last year, were not disappointed. As Selectmen shampoo indicated, schools open on August 28th for grades 1 through 12. Town offices will be closed on Labor Day, September 3rd. The first day of kindergarten is September 4th. And then there will be brush drop-off days on September 5th and 8th. The 5th is from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. It's a Wednesday. And the 8th is Saturday. It's from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Those are for folks to bring down leaves and brush at the, or brush at the Old Main Street Recycling Center. State primary election again is September 6th. Polls open at 7:00 a.m., close at 8:00 p.m. The library resumes its Saturday schedule beginning on September 8th. That is a 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. schedule on Saturdays. You are reminded that Hondan Tavern will have an open house on September 9th. And that brings us to the next Board of Selectmen meeting, which is September 10th. Also want to give advance notice of a public hearing that will be held here by the Massachusetts Department of Transportation regarding the Glenn Road Middlesex Avenue Intersection Improvement Project. That will be at 7 o'clock on September 24th.
Okay, there being no further business before the board, I'd ask for an executive, a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing contract negotiations with non-union personnel.
Not to return to open session.
Correct. Thank you.
Second.
May I second it? We'll take a roll call vote. Standing down here?
Yes.
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 And Chairman votes yes for unanimous vote.